Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order September 8th, 6:00 PM or so. Item 1.1, I'll call the order. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Fugazi, led by invocation by Pastor Malcolm McPhail. Please remain standing.
Do I make the pledge of allegiance? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Invocating whenever it is possible to do that, and I really believe it is a great privilege that you give us. And do not take it lightly. Also, I'm reminded of, there's much to say in the scriptures regarding wisdom, being wise, discretion, prudence, discernment, which are all key words when making decisions and when overseeing an organization or a city. And so that'll be my prayer for you tonight. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to pray for our council, to pray for our city, to pray for our community, our first responders that make up our community, everybody who makes up our community. And so I just pray for wisdom in our council members as they make decisions, because the decisions they make today will determine the stories that we tell tomorrow. And so I ask that you would give them wisdom and guidance in each and prudence in the decision-making process. I pray for our community, that you would keep it safe. Pray for our first responders, that at the end of the watch, they would all return home safely, and that your hand would be upon them. And I thank you for all these things, in your name. Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, item 1.4, City Clerks Reporting on Posting in the Agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. This agenda was posted on Friday, September 5th, at 8:02 AM.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco, Councilmember Klein, Councilmember Fugazi, Councilmember Hilton, Councilmember Marx, Councilmember Ramirez, Mayor Bozo.
Here. Thank you. Jumping to item number 2.1, Public Comment by Members of the Public on Items Not on the Agenda but Within the Subject Matter Jurisdiction of the City Council.
Yes, I have three speakers I would like to call up. Irene Garcia, then Ron Kirkish, and Greg Philios.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Irene Garcia. I'm here tonight because I work at Elliot School, and I want to talk about the issue of parking. I know there's a lot of cars that park there during the day, and it makes it hard for us workers to find parking in that area. I've also noticed that some of the cars stay there forever in the day. They don't move. So something needs to be done about it, because me, for example, I carry a lot of boxes with me to the school to and from my car. And it's really, really hard for me to walk two blocks carrying boxes. And so I know the others that were supposed to be here tonight couldn't make it, so I'm talking in behalf of them. And I've noticed that in other areas, they have signs that says, that they post that says no parking between the hours of 7:00 and 5:00 PM, and parking permit only. Maybe that would be a solution for us there at the school. Or maybe the police needs to get involved with the principal and see if they can come up with a better solution. Because this is a hardship, not just for myself, but for others that work there. And there's not enough parking in the area, so we have to have the off-street parking. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. There was an incident on 320 or thereabouts at Los Anamos Park. Some workers, city workers, were at the park, and they noticed a man behaving bizarrely. And so they called the police. The police showed up. In total, there was four. And they went, there was, the incident was happening in the bathroom at the park. The man was found, a very large man, about 300 pounds, was found smoking meth. They had a meth pipe on the floor. And so the officers tried to negotiate with the man, and he refused. So they had to use spray to get him down. And during the fracas, one of our officers broke his hands. And the ordeal was submitted to the Santa Clara County DA, Jeff Rosen, via a referral. The referral came back, and the referral says that he was going to deny prosecuting the person. And in all reality, I'll leave this here for you to see. All reality, he was, Jeff Rosen, was blaming the police for the altercation and breaking the hands. This is what our DA is doing. I'm going to bring more of this information to the attention of you and the public, and via my email distribution and across the state, what our DA is doing. You all need to know. I don't think you have the time to know. I'm gathering the information, and I'm going to make sure it gets spread around. Thank you very much.
Honorable public servants, I know you take very seriously your duty to serve your constituents. And a major part of your constituency are the schools. Now, we have, Councilmember Marquez was a teacher, Councilmember Ramirez was a teacher. They know, they know what it's like to be involved in the schools and getting the support from the community. And getting the support from the city council is wonderful. Here's how, and here's how the, I was talking about the school-community collaboration. Here's an opportunity for you guys to work, again, there's always, there's always a chance for you guys to work together. And it's best if you guys work together, because it's a win-win situation, you know, having, having each other's support and back and getting some good PR. And here's what happens. We have Dr. Anisha Munshi and her wonderful school board members, they go out to all the schools. They do school site visits. And I've mentioned to them last week, and I go to, I go to, I go to their meetings, then I come here, and I come, I come to your meetings every two weeks. And so what, they go out to the school sites, and they do, they do visits. This is a wonderful opportunity. And I, and I mentioned to them, I said, you know, it'd be great if you took some, anybody from the city council, Mayor Bozo, would be wonderful opportunity to educate the kids, what you guys are doing in city council, for these, for the, for the school, for people in schools to see that there is support from our city council members for the schools. They're working together. This is great, to work together to serve, you know, this constituency of parents, teachers, staff, students. That's a big chunk, that's a big chunk of people who will be, will benefit from, from, from having your support. So if there's ever an opportunity for you, and I know you, I know you're busy, but an opportunity to accompany the school, the members on these school site visits, I believe would be a, a great chance for you guys to get, get the word out about what you do, and to get support from the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, Reports of Council Members. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, so often, we appear, we let our staff know when we're unhappy with things that are going on in the city. And I wanted to mention, I attended a car show at the Gilroy Senior Center a few weeks ago that was put on by our staff. And there was 10 cars there. It was the first time they've ever done it. It was, Councilmember Klein was there, and one of our officers was there. And it was a good turnout. And I was really impressed with how well our staff cater to the seniors and make them feel that they're important. So I just wanted to give a shout out to our staff. And also on all the streets that are being paved right now around town. I've never seen us going gangbusters like we are right now, getting these streets paved. And I don't know if we got a different contractor, but they are doing a beautiful job. The roads are smooth. And they're, I'm impressed by the, the distribution of east side, west side, north, south, they're all over town. So keep up the good work, and job well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yeah, a report from Visit Gilroy. There's over 30 wineries in the Santa Clara Valley at large, but few people realized so far that most of them, actually 16, are in the Gilroy ZIP code. So Visit Gilroy is releasing a new Wineries of Gilroy brochure and social media reels for winemakers, to help Gilroy, you know, to show that Gilroy is synonymous with quality wine production. Some of the upcoming fall events include the Renaissance Fair, which there's some social media reels that were created for that already last year and will run again, and have been running, actually, I've seen them actually online already. Tamal Festival, the Beer Crawl, the La Frinda Health and Wellness Festival, these are all very important events that attract tourism to Gilroy and vendors to the Gilroy Hotels. Also, there was a recent reel that was created by Visit Gilroy about the Tamal Festival. It's already garnered over a million views and demonstrated that there's a California-wide interest in cultural events that happen in Gilroy. So this is really important stuff, and I think they're doing a really good job with the Visit Gilroy and getting the word out about Gilroy. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Marx.
No, no report.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Policy Advisory Committee, Happy Transit Month. The Gilroy Station Area Plan aligns with VTA's business line of transportation system management by encouraging comprehensive planning for sustainable and equitable land uses around transit. It supports VTA's other business line of fast, frequent, and reliable transit by supporting a partnership between City of Gilroy and VTA to co-lead a long-range planning effort to create a well-connected multi-mobile, multimodal transit hub in Gilroy. VTA has an active transit-oriented development program, which partners with developers to build TOD projects on VTA-owned properties at transit stations. These TOD sites serve as gateways to the VTA transit system, offering significant potential to attract new transit riders. To ensure the future developments preserve and enhance station access for the surrounding community, VTA conducts access studies for station sites identified in the TOD pipeline. Gilroy Transit Center serves as a key hub for multiple transit options, including VTA bus routes, San Benito County Express, Monterey Salinas Transit, Greyhound, and commuter shuttles. The VTA-owned 7.8 acre site on the west side of the tracks is identified for future mixed-use, mixed-income TOD, and will contribute to Gilroy's regional housing needs allocation of 1,773 units, housing units by 2031. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, SVCE began issuing $33 million to its customers through, through a one-time automatic bill credit. This bill credit reinforces the agency's commitment to, to community investment and is one of, is one of SVCE's ongoing efforts to provide some relief amid the increasing costs families and businesses admit experiencing. To date, customers have saved over $141 million since, since 2017 with the yearly SVCE electric generation discount. The bill credits will be going out in September, bringing those savings to a total of $174 million. As a local not-for-profit clean energy provider, SVCE reinvests in its member communities in many ways, including offering grants to increase local resilience at critical public facilities, funding local events, distributing youth scholarships, and providing rebates to help customers transition to efficient electric equipment that helps reduce local pollution. My office got to join SVCE, Santa Clara County Housing Authority, Association of Energy, of Energy Affordability, Ecology Action, Axtera, and ASG Builders at a pre-construction tour at Sunset Gardens here in Gilroy. SVCE Board approved $12 million of program funding for our multifamily direct install program. And into the program are built what's known as rent evictions. Safe communities are climate resilient communities. Sunset Gardens is SVCE's first project for the multifamily direct program. At no cost, electrification and energy efficiency upgrades to existable, affordable, multifamily properties in SVCE. Lastly, I'd like to welcome all the youth back to school. We're encouraging our school community to leave the car at home and choose to walk, bike, or roll to school. This helps teach our children safe walking and biking skills, reduces traffic and air pollution near our schools, and helps children get more physical activity. If you need suggested walk and bike routes, then please ask your school for their official map that was created by the Safe Road to School Task Force and funded by Public Health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Klein.
No report.
I'll report on South County Youth Task Force. South County Youth Task Force is a multi-staffed agency from City of Gilroy, City of Morgan Hill, Morgan Hill Unified, Gilroy Unified, local law enforcement, all the way up to Santa Clara County District Attorney's Office. And they do a lot of great work with diversion for youth in the South County area. And up until just yesterday, there were some major, major funding problems connected to this organization. And we're happy to announce that with some work from local electeds, like this man sitting to my left, we were able to get these funds released from the state, and South County Youth Task Force is now fully funded again. So thank you very much, Councilmember Hilton, for that help. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Consent Calendar. Want to pull some items? Okay. So item number 4.3 is going to be pulled from the consent. Any others? Okay, so we will go right to public comment on Consent Calendar, please.
I have no speakers.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion for items 4.1 and 4.2 on the Consent Calendar. Okay, do you have a second? I have a motion from Councilmember Bracco, and a second from Councilmember Klein on items 4.1 and 4.2 of the Consent Calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marx.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. So item 4.3, have a couple questions?
Yeah, I have some questions for staff. I mean, I think first, if they could give a brief overview, just briefly of what this is for, and then have a couple of questions for them on some specifics, and also for some education of the public.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Council. So this is, the city has had in the past several different joint use agreements with Valley Water for the purpose of being able to use their property to construct and to operate paths, trails to the city, both pedestrian and bike path. Each different segment in the past was its own joint use, or joint use agreement with differing terms, differing termination dates, and to track that. And so this was triggered with the awarding of the federal funds to extend the, the path from Kern along Lions Creek, from Kern to Day Road, and over to Tapestry. And so as part of that funding, we had to prove that we have access to the site, that we can make the improvements in order to execute the project. When we started that conversation with Valley Water, they mentioned that there was already one joint use agreement that was already expired, and they want to take up multiple at the same time. So as we kind of started talking about that with their staff, it was decided, well, let's just do a master agreement, so that we're not tracking along with multiple agreements. It's all in one clear document, one termination date, one renewal that we have to do. And they liken it to, I guess they have another one similar to this with San Jose. And so this is going to be their path going forward with all these joint use agreements with other cities, to get all consolidated into one. And so we've been working with their, their staff, their operations, engineering, legal, to get an agreement so that we can evidence that we have control of the site in order to develop rest of that trail network and maintain existing control that we have for the, the previous segments. So we worked with our, our City Attorney's Office or the Public Works Department to work on, to look at the, sorry, to review the agreement and make sure that we can deliver on, on those conditions and terms. So once we receive one at staff level that looks good, that we are the first step in that process. And then once council approves it, it goes to the Valley Water, their board, to make the final approval and execute the agreement.
Okay, so maybe as a percentage, how much of the Valley Water, Water Network, however you want to call it, obviously Uves Creek is part of that, and then you also have the canals that run through the city slough and whatnot. How much of that is part of our trail network right now? I know I asked for a map, but we didn't have a overview map, and...
Yeah, we, I don't have that statistics. We haven't done that kind of analysis yet on it.
Okay. And the terms of this contract require us to do certain things in this, right? By, I mean, it's by contract, we're supposed to do things. What kinds of things are we supposed to do?
Yeah, so we accept the responsibility for maintenance and, and, maintenance and liability for the improvements that we do. That's the core function. So that's in, let's see here, that is in, there's two sections in the agreement that apply to this. Let's go up here. The first is Section 12, Construction, Maintenance, and Repair. Section B, basically we'd be responsible for construction, operation of all recreational improvements that we want to put on their, on their property. Maintenance and usable in safe condition. Duty to cost expense to provide any security, police, or preparation for any traffic or pedestrian detour plans. So basically, anything revolving operations of the trails and the improvements that we do, we're responsible maintaining and keeping it safe condition.
Is encampment debatement on there?
I do not see it. I don't believe so.
The way I understood it, the way I understood it was, anything, anything that is related to the proper, the effective use of recreation is why, and this is why we are going to have the trails that we are responsible for.
And we're also responsible for maintaining things that would pollute the water, correct? Like, there are no dogs allowed on those trails, right?
You can have a leash.
I, I mean, again, maybe this has got to come back another time to council, because I read the contract, and I believe it said that no, no dogs are allowed on those trails. I could be, I could be wrong.
It says dogs except on leash or other domestic animals.
I read some other part, but I, I'll take it for your word on that.
I'm looking at it right now. It's under prohibited uses of trail, number four.
Okay. And is there an encampment section on there as well?
I haven't found it yet.
Yeah.
But I thought I read that.
Yeah. My curiosity, just to extend, is if we're required to do certain things in these areas in order to abide by this contract, shouldn't we also expect the Valley Water themselves do the same kinds of things on the ones that we don't manage? Or why would we want to sign up for more than they even do themselves? That's where my confusion is on, on us signing up for part of the city to take care of this, and the other part they're supposed to take care of, and we have to do potentially more than they are currently doing to manage the, you know, the water system right now.
So the sections of the agreement, the section of the trails that this applies to are those that we have joint use on. So in those, those mini-maps in the back shows the scope. So outside of those areas that we've already done improvements to, we, that is not the responsibility of the city. It's only for those segments that we have actually made improvements on to be a recreational trail.
Right. We wouldn't want to uphold higher standards to us than they themselves are not upholding, would we?
I understand your point.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'll go back to the public. Any more public comment on item 4.3?
I have no speakers.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the Consent Calendar of item 4.3.
So moved. Any encampments is in there. It's number 10 after number four. You want me to read it?
Okay, I'm looking for a second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton, and a second by Councilmember Bracco for the approval of item 4.3 on the Consent Calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marx.
Yes.
And Mayor Bozo.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item five, Bids and Proposals. 5.1, Award a Contract to SVA Architects Incorporated for Architectural Design Services for Library Improvements and Renovation. 25-RFP, PW2520, and Adopt a Resolution Amending the Fiscal Year 25-26 Budget to Appropriate the Funds. Take it away, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Ozenson. I'm the Capital Projects Manager in our Public Works Division. Tonight, I'm going to be speaking a little bit about the library improvements design project and the process we went through to select SVA architects. Our recommendations coming out of tonight for the council to consider is, number one, to award a contract to SVA architects in a total project cost of $390,660. Second would be to adopt the resolution to amend the fiscal year budget for the library funds, for the Gilroy Library Fund to appropriate these funds, and then to authorize the interim city manager to execute that agreement. A little bit of background here, the Gilroy Library was constructed in 2012 using general obligation bond proceeds. We currently have about $5.8 million in those unspent bond funds available. In 2024, the Santa Clara County Library District initiated and funded a feasibility study to evaluate the building limitations and identify some cost-effective improvements that we can make to the library. Following this study, the Gilroy City Council adopted Resolution Number 2024-45, which approved $800,000 to cover design-related expenses, which was included in the fiscal year 24 to 28 Capital Improvement Program Budget as Project 801000. Some of the library needs, the, the design project will focus on several areas of need within the library, including an evaluation of the building management system, which controls the HVAC system, the lighting system, all the aspects of keeping the library comfortable. We would convert upstairs open spaces into private meeting rooms. We would expand areas of the teen area and the children's programming services, as well as remodeling all service points throughout the library. And then we would try to create more impactful, flexible spaces, such as a makers' room and a larger community room. For the bid process, we issued the RFP in June of 2025. The RFP covered architectural services, construction documents, bid phase support, and limited construction administration. We received eight proposals, which were reviewed and scored from an internal evaluation committee. That same committee determined that SVA Architects was the top-ranked proposal and most qualified firm. They were selected based off of their relevant experience. They've built numerous library projects throughout California and provided a very comprehensive work plan with their proposal. Their proposal was also the lowest cost, with $385,660 to do the design work, and then $5,000 in reimbursable expenses, bringing the project total to 390. SVA's proposed schedule would take approximately 10 months to complete design, construction documents, and bid support, which would put construction starting sometime around August of 2026. For the funding source, this is a capital improvement project that's identified as 801000. And this project is fully funded from the Gilroy Community Library Fund for a total of $390,000. We would have to do a budget amendment. We were anticipating doing this project during fiscal year of 2025. We've obviously missed that now, and we're in fiscal year 26. So we would ask that a budget amendment be passed to move these funds into fiscal year 26. And if you approve tonight's proposal, we will move this forward to contract with SVA Architects and commence design immediately. I'll be taking any questions.
Questions for staff? Go ahead.
Go back to the, one of the first slides where you said that, that the proceeds could only be used for, there you go. Second bullet, right? It says can only be used for improvements to real property. This came up last year, and I'm only going to make a point here that, and correct me if I'm wrong, back then, it was decided by the council that they wanted to spend this, but one of the options was that money could have gone back to the taxpayers? Isn't that correct?
I was not employed here at the time of that discussion, so I can't answer that.
I'm just talking to the finance director. That is correct. So one of the alternatives presented to council when this CIP was added officially to the charter and the dollars were appropriated was returning the monies back to the taxpayers in a form of essentially lowering future property assessments.
But to be clear, that was not identified in the packet at the time as to how much any taxpayer might receive back, and, and given any kind of, I just want to make, make clear when we have bond stuff in the future that people understand. This is great, it's going for the library and everything. But there is a choice that you get made when you don't spend money, is that one of those choices is it can go back to the taxpayers and lower their, their property tax. And the choice here, for whatever reason, was made this way. And we, and in the decision-making process, which I hope we don't have the same kind of decision-making process going forward, it was not given to the people exactly what that might mean. If it's $5, if it's $15... If it's $5, if it's $15 a month, or what it might be. So anyway, thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you. Further questions or comments for Ryan? Public comment?
I have no speakers.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Bracco and a second by Councilmember Marks. I'm going to knock off two items here. Award a contract to SVA Architects Incorporated in the amount of $390,660. $385,660 is the base fee, $5,000 is for reimbursement expenses for architectural design services for the library improvements and renovation project, and authorize the interim city administrator to execute the agreement and all other related documents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Additionally, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2526 budget with the Gilroy Library Fund, number 405, to appropriate $390,660. A motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Klein and a second by Councilmember Bracco. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 5.2, amend a contract with Dewberry Engineers Incorporated to add $29,880 to the contract for the design of the Lions Creek project and adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2526 budget to appropriate the additional funds. Take it away, John.
Thank you. Return back a little bit on Lions Creek Trail. This goes back a ways, back to 2015, and we were here just a few months ago requesting approval of the contract with Dewberry for full design. Today is a request for a small modification to that agreement with Dewberry, and I'll get into that. Lions Creek Trail extension would extend the existing paved improved trail from Kern Avenue to the pedestrian bridge at the, at the terminus of Tapestry Drive over near Christopher High. So this would be an extremely important link in the trail system and would be an additional asset, I guess, under the, the agreement that was just discussed under consent. Background on this, the city has secured three grants, and this project is basically funded almost entirely through those grants. I know, thank you to, to Councilmember Hilton for his tireless work, and I'm sure there's any number of folks out there as well who can take some claim to this. We were here again in April requesting approval of a $189,652 contract with Dewberry, which you did approve. Just to give you a little bit of update, the work is underway with the design, both intersection and the trail. One of the grant, grants we've got was specifically being allocated to the improvement of the intersection, including a crosswalk there and some other improvements and safety improvements, which we know the community, and particularly those using the school in that area, are going to be happy to see. This project includes permitting through Santa Clara Valley Water, and this is really the basis for the, the contract adjustment, is dealing with a concern that's come up with Santa Clara Valley Water. This project was surveyed last in 2015, and we were hoping to be able to use that. That survey, Valley Waters indicated that they felt that there were enough changes in the water course there and whatever, in their minds, is that we needed to do another survey and just to confirm what is existing there. And that is why we're here with this amendment for a new topographic survey. Again, this would be a total cost of $29,880, and relatively inexpensive features of that. One of those components would be through federal grant, and a portion of this would be paid through the gas tax. None of this would be a general fund obligation as part of this amendment. Finally, we recommend that the council approve a contract amendment with Dewberry Engineers to add $29,880 to the contract for a total not to exceed the amount of 219,532. And as always, that includes authorizing the city administrator to complete execution of documents. Thank you.
Questions for John? Public comment?
I have no speakers.
I'll just make a comment, just so, this is for the public. So this is, the area that you're talking about is for design services from Kern Avenue all the way through the, follow the canal all the way to Day and Santa Teresa at Christopher High School, correct?
Across and then across Santa Teresa, and then along the ditch to the pedestrian bridge that's right at the terminus of Tapestry.
So this will complete a path that goes all the way from Farrell and Church, all the way through those neighborhoods, all the way to the front door of Christopher High, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Fugazi to amend a contract with Dewberry Engineers Incorporated to add $29,880 to the contract for a total numbered not to exceed $219,532.26, as well as authorize the city administrator to execute the amendment and related documents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. I will also entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2526 budget to appropriate the $29,880 within the transportation mobility grants funds, which is $14,780.85, and the gas tax fund, which is $15,179.15.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a, a motion by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Marks. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Move, moving on to item number six, introduction of new business. Authorize the city administrator to enter into an eight-year master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated to purchase the Axon Records Draft 1 report writing software for $499,233.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. We've prepared a short presentation tonight, or we can go directly to questions on this. I'll leave it up to you.
Well, you could do a short presentation, please. Thank you.
Okay. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Brian Dutton. I'm currently an acting captain overseeing field operations. The department's currently under a service agreement for Axon body worn cameras, tasers, and evidence storage and maintenance, which expires in approximately eight years. Axon recently introduced Draft 1, an AI-based system that generates a draft police report from audio captured from an officer's body worn camera. Draft 1 was adopted as part of the fiscal year 26 and 27 budget cycle at approximately $62,000 per year. This presentation is for council authorization to enter into an eight-year master services agreement for Axon's Draft 1 for the remainder of our total contract with Axon. The total agreement's for $499,233 amortized over the next eight years, or about $62,000 per year, and that dollar amount includes the monies already budgeted in our current budget cycle. About two years ago, the police department adopted Axon's body worn camera system, along with their digital evidence management platform, Evidence.com. These tools have already made a significant impact on workflow and employee efficiency, as officers can now collect, store, and submit evidence digitally to include video, photos, and documents. This has reduced staff time with the collection and processing of physical evidence and the requisite paperwork. However, body worn cameras create a new challenge. Every video must be reviewed and summarized to ensure that police reports are accurate and consistent with what was recorded. This review and transcription process can be time-consuming, and it reduces the time officers have to respond to calls for service, proactively patrol the city, or engage with the community. Artificial intelligence is now being integrated into workplaces across industries, and law enforcement's no exception. In reference to body worn camera and other recorded audio, Draft 1 offers a secure, law enforcement-specific solution. It is directly integrated into our existing Axon platform, and with a single click of a button inside Evidence.com, the system can review video or audio, whether from a body worn camera or other source, and generate a draft police report. By providing a first draft, Draft 1 can cut down the time officers spend typing reports from scratch, and since it's a draft, officers remain responsible for the accuracy of the report. The system does not replace officer accountability. Every report must be reviewed and approved by the officer and then by a supervisor. We tested Draft 1 earlier this year with 23 of our patrol officers. Over the course of the test, they generated about 370 draft reports, and upon completing those reports, they completed a survey or summary of the workflow. On average, those officers estimated saving approximately 24 minutes per report. So there are other vendors entering the AI market, but Axon is uniquely positioned for our needs. They already are trusted provider for body worn cameras and digital evidence storage, and we currently have a contract with them which expires in eight years. They are also the industry leader in law enforcement technology solutions. Draft 1 is fully integrated into Evidence.com, the system that we are using daily. The system meets the FBI's CGIS security standards, ensuring data security. Training and implementation will be minimal because our staff already works within the Axon platform, which uses a very intuitive user interface. And Axon has provided a high level of service and support to the department during its time with our existing contract. While the annual cost is $62,000 per year, this multi-year agreement locks in pricing at a time when Axon's costs have risen 30% since we initially signed our contract two years ago. We would expect future price increases over the next eight years as well. In short, Draft 1 offers us a secure, tested, and effective way to reduce the time officers spend on paperwork while increasing their time spent in the community and strengthening productivity without requiring additional staff. And just to give you a quick preview, I took a couple of screenshots from Evidence.com to just give the council an idea of what the workflow looks like. So the back display here is what would come up if I went into my Evidence.com title page or home screen, for lack of a better term. I would then go to this blue button that says Report Writer. This screen would come up. I would have a series of videos that were just uploaded from body worn camera, or I can upload them there myself. I would click Draft 1, and then I'd have a series of dropdown menus to walk through the option to generate the draft report. The first screen, and this is the first screen, it has what the, the general nature of the report is, and then it takes you on a bunch of other dropdowns, as far as the length or the, the specificity needed for the report. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm doing my best answer.
Bracco, Captain Bracco, go first. Thank you.
Officer Dutton, when will this be implemented?
So, since it's already been approved for the, the two-year budget cycle, we currently have it in place, but we would do a more formal rollout to ensure that our staff are all using it when appropriate.
Can, can you get more specific? Because so often, we approve something, especially at the police department, and it doesn't go into effect for like three, four years after.
It's in effect now, and we really want to push this out. We're trying to figure out ways to make our staff more efficient with their time, and this is something that we're going to actively have them use.
So you already use it, so you're going to continue adding to it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fugazi?
So, on average, per officer, how many reports are written a day, just out of curiosity?
So, last year, we took 5,893 reports, and those are original reports. That's where...
Across how many officers?
Approximately 65.
Okay.
So it works out to about one, at our minimum staffing level, it works out to about 1.6 reports per officer per day.
Perfect. And at about 23 minutes apiece, you said?
That's correct.
So essentially, this is like almost getting a free officer? Is that pretty close to accurate?
I think, looking at the number of cases that we have, and then the supplemental reports that follow, we wanted to do a conservative estimate, and we think that we can have about 50 to 60% of those reports using...
In manpower savings, is it a half of a, an officer's savings? Is it full? Is it one and a half? Just, this is really good for everybody to, I mean, it's, I, I love it, but I think you're, you might even be underselling it.
Okay. So we think it's somewhere between 114,000 to 155,000 dollars per year in savings on that conservative estimate of 50 to 60 reports. So that would be, and it depends on how you want to look at it.
Sure.
If it's just straight payroll, that would be about an officer.
Right.
If it's including benefits, maybe three quarters.
Correct.
I'm trying to do the math in my head really fast.
No, I think you're doing it right. I think that's about where I got in my head with it, too, and I think that's really important to understand. And you've got, how much a year is it, you said? It's 60 grand a year or something like that?
$62,000 per year.
Right. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Can you go back to the slide where you have community benefit? And right there, on the second bullet point, under benefits, some of the possible benefits, he says increases time for proactive patrol and community engagement. So I want to make a comment that just this last week at coffee with the mayor, we continue to get feedback from the community about interest in pedestrian safety, biking enforcement with the electric bikes, and speeding around this community. So this is definitely something this community would be interested in when it comes to these efficiencies that are gained, that come along with this technology. So not a question, just a comment. Okay. Public comment, please?
I have no speakers.
Okay, so if there are no further questions, for Acting Captain Dutton, I will entertain a motion.
Moved.
For both, excuse me, yeah. I will entertain a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Fugazi. Looking for a second?
Sorry.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Fugazi, a second by Councilmember Bracco, to authorize the city administrator enter into an eight-year master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for $499,233 to purchase the Axon Records Draft 1 report writing software and authorize the city administrator to execute the master services and purchasing agreement and related purchasing documents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Moving on to item 6.2, issuance of an exploratory request for proposals for the use of opioid, excuse me, opioid settlement funds. Rice?
Yes, Mayor Council. So the city participates in opioid settlements and bankruptcy agreements, all for nationwide to cities, counties, and states. Currently, the city has accumulated about $237,000 in those funds. They are heavily restricted on what's allowed, an allowable use. Most are eligible, most of the eligible categories, activity the city does not perform itself. So the city funds, so you use the funds previously for naloxone or sometimes called Narcan purchases for city staff to be used if they encounter some overdosing in the community, but it's rarely used, and most will actually be disposed of due to expiration of the medicine. The city did receive an unsolicited proposal from a local nonprofit after hearing about the funds during the budget process. But for competitive procurement requirements and to see what programs are available and possible, staff is asked to issue an exploratory request for proposals. So this is basically an RFP that doesn't have a specific program that we're asking them to bid against. It's an opportunity for any of these agencies to offer programs they might be able to provide that meet the requirements of that funding. So the proposals would then be received and evaluated against the allowable uses, and that report will come back to council to determine which programs council wishes to have funded through this. Then the specific contract terms will be created to ensure the reporting is consistent, meets the requirements from the opioid settlement administrators. And so we're seeking council's approval to go ahead and issue that, since it's a little unorthodox approach to what we usually do for RFPs. That completes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Public comment, please?
Yes, I have three speakers. Anne Marie McCully, followed by Vanessa Ashford and Sam Brown.
My name is Anne Marie McCully, and I am commenting on the opioid settlement funds. On May 10, 2025, I was going through the Gilroy City budget to better understand our finances. As the South County... As the South County Representative for Mothers Against Drug Addiction and Deaths, I was educated on the possibility of opioid settlement money sitting in city coffers. I've been very critical of the city for not aggressively accessing the tax money that Gilroy citizens pay from the county, state, and federal government to using Gilroy to fund our service providers so they can address our specific needs. You can only imagine my complete joy when I found this money. Instead of returning this back to the county, like most cities do, Jimmy Forbes decided to keep it, and for that, I'm very grateful. I'm also grateful to Mayor Greg Bozo for meeting with the mothers in Gilroy during his campaign and showing them the respect and dignity they deserve. I can only hope that our council will follow his example. Bryce agreed to a meeting with us. These are hard meetings because people have lost their children, have children suffering on the streets with no services, and service providers who are expected to solve all our problems with inadequate funding, only to be blamed for the failings of these programs. Bryce has done an excellent job of balancing compassion, fiscal responsibility, and good old fashioned rule following, all of which are critical in dealing with the opioid crisis. Please give our local organizations the opportunity to apply for this funding. I also encourage those of you who have not met with myself, the families affected by addiction and overdose, and the organizations that provide services to reach out and better understand substance abuse disorder, fentanyl poisoning, and recovery. Thank you for your consideration in helping service providers get the funding they need.
Good evening. First, I want to thank Anne Marie for her investigative dissection of the budget and stumbling upon this money, and Jimmy for accepting it. My name is Vanessa Ashford. I've been working directly in our encampments, reentry communities, and child protective services involved family, offering support, mentorship, navigation of families directly impacted or currently experiencing addiction. Gilroy is unique in that we are removed from easy access to services. We can do referrals, we can give people a phone number, but to get the services that it takes to successfully overcome serious addiction is really, really challenging in Gilroy for many reasons. Poverty, education, transportation, lack of, like, community support. A lot of people think that the opposite of addiction is abstinence, right? Not putting anything in your body. What is really the opposite is connection. Connection to a support group, a 12-step group, peers who have been through it. Pit Stop, Carry the Vision, Rooted Now, which is the employment social enterprise, we all have that experience and we do that direct work. What we lack is enough funding to do it at a larger scale. We are limited in capacity. So when we found out that there was money directly from the drug companies that created a part of this horrific addiction that's affecting our communities, we were ecstatic. We were like, how do we get this money out here now? We have people overdosing today. We have our first responders responding to multiple overdose calls, and people are refusing service. What Sam and I do in those situations is we go knock on doors, and we sit with people, and we take Narcan, and we go to meetings, and we take them food. And there's a lot of things that we do that we never talk about because we can't talk about, but if we could get more of those trusted messengers in the community, it's a very effective way to combat addiction in ways that law enforcement can't currently right now. We can't throw people in jail under the law for having an addiction or, you know, a dime sack. We just don't have that legal capacity right now. And so we ask that the council take into consideration expediting this exploration so that we can get this money into the community and prevent overdose and death in the best way we know how. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Sam Brown. I have been working and present, president in our community for the past five years. In the last three years, we have directly experienced the destruction of fentanyl. Much in fact, most of the work, the things we see, the people who die or almost die, we never talk about. We are, we are there through, we are, we are thankful to Jimmy accepting the money. We are here to ask that the money stay in Gilroy. That it be given to the CBOs at a trusted messenger to further prevent the death and support recovery. We now, we know the path. We want the money to be used to help those who were harmed by the drug companies and intended. Thank you.
We have a problem. We have an opioid problem, we have a drug problem. But we have a major problem, and we have a district attorney who refuses to prosecute drug crimes. In his Benny New York video, he says he will not do what they call a 148 single, that a person has to be arrested three times within a year before they will take it, and even that doesn't guarantee that he will do it. The problem, I'm glad to see that we got the money, but we don't have a DA. We have a defense attorney, and we need to fix it. Thank you.
I have no further speakers.
Thank you very much. Any further questions for staff from council? None. I will entertain a motion for council to authorize staff to issue an exploratory request for proposals for the use of opioid settlement funds.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Marks, and a second by Councilmember Fugati. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugati.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Item number 6.3 is city administrator recruitment process. I will let Leanne start this off, and I will take it from there.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and members of the Gilroy community. The mayor asked me to present this information regarding the city administrator recruitment, and then he will facilitate any discussion to follow the presentation of information. So the staff report included within the agenda packet covers some background information, information about the different search firm proposals that we've received, the creation of a council subcommittee, community outreach, the search work plan and timeline, the future city administrator salary and benefits, and then our next steps. So those are the topics we'll be covering. So with respect to the search firm proposals, we received six from different firms. We reviewed those and recommended to two firms that demonstrated the most recent experience with California city administrator, city manager searches. The interim city administrator subcommittee, which consisted of Mayor Bozo, Councilmember Klein, Councilmember Ramirez, reviewed the summary chart of all six proposals, as well as the recommendation for the two firms, and did identify Ralph Anderson and Associates as the firm that was best suited to work on this process for us. The proposal pricing ranged from $25,000 to $37,100. The average cost was $29,433. Ralph Anderson and Associates' proposal was a $29,000 flat fee for search for services and the related expenses like ads and things like that in the brochure. We're working on finalizing an agreement for services with Ralph Anderson and Associates. Fred Wilson, who has an excellent reputation, is assigned as the project director for this search, and the firm is ready to get started. The search work plan and timeline will be about 12 to 14 weeks, and that's from the signing of the agreement to the salary and benefit negotiations with the candidate that the council selects. So this is broken down into various steps to get us from start to finish, reviewing the project management approach, developing a position profile, various outreach and recruiting. That's the piece that takes the most time, is getting out there and talking with candidates and recruiting for the position. Candidate evaluation, they will then come back to you with a search report. Council will then interview finalists. Council will make a selection. Background check will be completed, salary and benefit negotiations, and then the employment agreement for the final candidate council selects will be approved at a council meeting in an open session. So council subcommittee, most steps of this kind of process, because it's your chief executive officer, will require, will require the involvement of the full council. But the subcommittee can assist with administrative and certain process steps to help keep things moving and expedite things. It is customary for the mayor to serve as the lead of this subcommittee, and things that the subcommittee will work on is review of the search firm proposals and final improvement of the agreement, which will have the mayor do based on what the selection of the search firm has been. Review draft documents to include a final recruitment brochure, pre-screening candidates, but the full council is to review the recommended shortlist and will conduct the interviews, assist the search firm with any questions, assist with salary and benefit negotiations. So the thing that the council needs to decide tonight is will the existing subcommittee that worked on the interim city administrator recruitment process continue, or will there be changes to the subcommittee? Community outreach, the level of outreach on this kind of a search will be determined by the council. This can involve direct contact and feedback with community members, but it's very important for the council to share their feedback with the search firm and other members of the council. So this can be factored into the profile that's developed for the city administrator, the screening process, and the interview assessment process. An example that we touched on, Mayor, when we were talking, is seeking input from community members at your coffee with the mayor. But there could be other mechanisms, and you all can decide that. City administrator salary and benefits, we're recommending that the salary remain open on the recruitment brochure with a depending on qualifications statement. This gives the council more flexibility to set a salary based on the desired candidate and not be restricted by historical or pre-established salary. The salary will be negotiated with a finalist once that person is selected by council, and then it will be, the salary will be part of the employment agreement that's approved in an open public meeting. The current executive benefits package will be noted on the job brochure, but they will add that same notation that other benefits may be considered depending on qualifications of selected candidate, again, leaving flexibility for the council, and anything that we agree to will be part of final contract negotiations with the finalists that the council selects. So next steps that we have before us are finalizing the agreement, which is very close to being done and should be even signed as early as tomorrow. Scheduling the initial kickoff meeting with the search firm and council subcommittee. Scheduling individual meetings for the council with the search firm to develop the city administrator profile. The council members will be working to collect community input, which will be shared with the search firm and amongst yourselves. And then the council subcommittee would review the draft recruitment brochure prior to it being finalized, and that's what will be the main tool used for recruitment and outreach. So the recommendations before you tonight with this report is to review the process and be clear amongst yourselves, the process you want to move forward with. Establish council subcommittee for the city administrator recruitment process. Confirm amongst yourselves that the salary information posted on the job flyer will be depending upon qualifications, as well as a similar note to be included with the standard benefit information. Those are really the three actions for tonight, but you can have any other discussion regarding the recruitment process you wish to have, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Or the mayor can answer all the questions.
I'll actually take advantage of you being here. If council has any questions, when it comes to like HR and process and things like that, normal policies, when it comes to hiring, I would ask you guys to ask those questions now. It's something that I won't be very good at answering.
I have one.
Thank you.
So depending upon qualifications, like, what's the pros and what's the cons of that?
The pro is that it keeps it very flexible for council. So a candidate who has in their mind, well, hey, that job in Gilroy looks awesome, and everything that's in the profile and all the projects and things that the person in this job is going to get to work on are right up my alley, but the salary that's in the job flyer is a little lower than what I really want, so, okay, I'm not going to apply. Whereas if it says depending on qualifications, they may say all of those things and say, oh, but they're open to possibly meeting my salary request, so I'm going to put in for it because I can negotiate my salary.
So this would be more of like these executives pitching what they think they're worth? Like, do executives walk around, did you pitch your work? I mean, does everybody have a number? And I'm interested in hearing the public perspective, but I'm also really interested in hearing the private perspective of these kind of folks.
Well, the one thing for me that comes to mind is obviously the previous city administrator had a public salary, so it's clear they're going to probably understand where the floor is, okay? But by doing this, they don't necessarily understand, you know, where the ceiling is. I'm not saying there's an answer to this, but I think it will be understood that it's only going to be around here. So my bigger concern is without getting a salary understanding from an expert, right, and having some direction from council here to say, okay, where's the bottom 25 percentile? Where's the upper? Again, using cities of this size, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You still may be skipping out on some people who will look at that and see that as potentially too low. And I know that most of the public and everybody else sees that position as a lot of money, which it is, but it's also a very small subset of people who have the talent. And if we want to put somebody, you know, with the clipboard in the city that has an even more elevated set of requirements, we may want to consider that. That's all I'm throwing out there.
They want to consider what?
Putting actually some other range in there.
Yeah.
That we've come up with so that they understand where the ceiling might be, but it's dependent on qualifications. And that's highly dependent upon somebody understanding what is out there right now, rather than them going, well, they might go, you know, 10% higher, and for whatever reason, we've collectively thought, well, we might even go 20% higher.
Yeah.
But they're not going to necessarily get that through the communication. Hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
So it leaves it open, one, the DOQ, and one of the things that I would say that would be a parameter for you to work out with Fred Wilson, who will be leading this search, is for him to be gathering salary expectations as part of his review and screening process. That's a typical fair question that a search firm will ask of candidates who are putting in for a job and who have, you know, who maybe meet the profile that you all put together, then that's going to be something that Fred is going to vet out with those candidates and be able to share back with you. So you'll know, you know, with the shortlist that you receive, or the subcommittee even before that, you know, kind of what the expectation level is of candidates that are getting vetted through the process.
Or other creative compensation ideas.
True. Very true.
Brad, do you have anything to add? Any further questions so far? Go ahead.
So it's clear, I can help with the process, but I'm not involved in the selection. That's very important for my ICMA ethics provision, as well as the senior advisor. I think you hit right on it. I've always said flexibility is good, but any candidate worth their salt will have done their research, and they will check out what the current, they'll be right on checking out the current, previous administrator's salary, and they will be checking the salaries of the surrounding areas. I also want to say the talent pool is thin. Talent pool is thin. And so salary isn't necessarily always the deciding factor. So I do agree with the position of keeping both flexible. And I can't make a promise, but from my own personal experience, I can tell you that if I go, if I was to go in and really push the edge on a situation, I know I'm putting the council in an awkward spot, because they have to go back and justify this to the community. And so you could put a range in, you could do that, there's nothing wrong with that, but as Leanne said, if you make it clear to Fred, the recruiter, that you want people that are upfront about what their expectations are, not solid, but whatever, he will see that's done.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
Ron Kirkish. Ron Kirkish.
One of the criteria for a new city administrator, I've heard one person speak up and say that they want the city administrator to reside in Gilroy. That's going to be possibly a challenge. I know of one person who is interested in going for the position. He called me the other day and said, Ron, I'm looking for a fixer-upper. Can you help me find a way to get a fixer-upper if I get chosen? So I put him onto Mark Turner's wife, she's a real estate person. The gentleman I have the highest regard for, but we'll see how you all feel about him. But again, to reside in Gilroy is going to be something I think that might be a challenge for, for the next person. Thank you.
I have no further speakers.
Thank you. Okay, I'll try to pick up a little of the conversation. Don't go away, just in case. I would like to pick it up and I'd like to break, I would like the next part to break it up into two parts. And this, I'm not really seeking a lot of feedback, but take, I'll take questions, of course, but I just want to update council and the public on how we got to this point. So going all the way back to, as far as this subcommittee that we have, especially when it comes to the subcommittee that we have now, going back, all the way back to spring, council approved the subcommittee and at that time it was to review the goals and the job description and the future goals of then-city administrator Jimmy Forbus, right? So, and then June came along and Jimmy Forbus went into retirement and the same subcommittee then began the process with approval by council to continue, then began the process of the next steps of the administrative process and the review process of coming, of looking for the interim city administrator. So this subcommittee's been working together for a good six or seven months now. So, and we did, and as Leanne mentioned, there was a vetting process for the search firm that we have selected and it was narrowed down to two different consulting firms, the recruitment firms, excuse me. And one of them has been doing work with the city of Gilroy already and the second one, which we ended up choosing, Councilmember Klein and Councilmember Ramirez and I, is named Ralph Anderson and Associates. And I just want to give you guys a couple of ideas of why we chose them, right? Number one, we've heard very good things about the recruiter that worked for Ralph Anderson and Associates and that's a person named Fred Wilson. And he's been a city administrator for quite a few years for the city of Huntington Beach and he's been doing, he's been doing recruitment for many, many years and has, and he has, in his company and he does have many.
He is retired.
He is retired, excuse me, and he's doing recruitment and his company has placements of city managers and a lot of economic development directors on the West Coast. And that's one thing that drew us to this firm and this gentleman that we knew that we were getting Fred Wilson and also our interim city manager knows him as well from past working, so we thought that would be a good fit. So that's how we came up with that person. So that, this is how we got to the point of where we are at today. I do believe though, it is time to change the subcommittee to other council members. I just think it's time. Council members, different council members are on different subcommittees already and ad-hocs. And so just based on some of the experiences that our council members have from their private lives and some of the experiences that they have from their time spent on council, I do believe it's time to go in a different direction with the ad hoc committee. So are there any questions so far about that? Okay. As Leanne mentioned in her report, it is very customary when it comes to the search of a city administrator that the mayor leads that committee. So I do believe that as, a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about the Sharkside Subcommittee, I know some council members were really encouraging me to be a part on that committee and I did decide to pass on that, but I do believe that as the mayor, I should be the head of this committee. So that's my first recommendation, right? And my second recommendation is that I do believe that would be very good to have someone from the private sector that's been, that has dealt with executive level management and hiring. So I would like to, this council to consider Councilmember Fugazi to be on this ad hoc with myself. And I do believe, I say this in the past, I said this on the very first day as mayor, I do think that historical perspective is extremely important when it comes to this ad hoc and hiring a city council member. And there's nobody that has more historical perspective on this council than Councilmember Bracco. And I think it would be important for him to be on the subcommittee as well. So with that being said, I'll open up this, the floor for comments and questions from other council members.
As Pastor McPhail said earlier, we need to relish in our wisdom.
So yeah, please, comments, please.
Make a motion.
I'll entertain a motion that the ad hoc committee for the city administrators recruitment process is led by myself and as well as Councilmember Bracco and Councilmember Fugazi.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a second by Councilmember Hilton. Excuse me, I have a motion by Councilmember Hilton.
No, you made the motion.
I have a motion by myself.
He was entertaining a motion.
I know, he's trying to tip it off. I want you to take it.
Motion.
Okay. I made the motion, I'll take the second. I believe it was by Councilmember Hilton. Thank you very much. Sorry, Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Mayor Bozo.
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Yes. Okay, thank you. Did I, sorry, as we got right into that, did I miss anything?
Number three.
Did I miss anything as far as some of the asks that we're looking for here?
Just if there's any questions regarding the information presented tonight, that would be under item one. You already took care of item two and then confirming item three.
Okay, so just a message for council, the, almost the very next process is certainly we'll get together, but one of the things that I did not say and I want the community to hear this and the council to hear this is that most of the role of this ad hoc committee, like others, are administrative. We are here to move the process along as fast as possible. The difference between the search for the city administrator and the search for the interim is that council is going to have much more contact with the applicants than they did when it came to the search for the interim city administrator.
And interaction with Mr. Wilson from Ralph Anderson.
Right. And one of the very next steps and the first steps with Mr. Wilson from Ralph Anderson is to meet with every individual on council, which will help determine a lot of those things that we already talked about this evening and the brochure is what you guys call it in your business, right? That goes out for the recruitment process, that everyone on council is going to have input on what's on that brochure.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. What have I missed? Legal? Okay, sorry, help me out.
Just is council comfortable with the depending on qualifications wording? And then you could refine that further with the subcommittee if you want to put a range in there or just completely leave it open-ended?
Okay, so, so, so we're determining if community outreach survey will be included in the selection process and I think we, you've talked about that a little bit, right? I do like the idea of what you said about coffee with the mayor. Am I, am I on the right?
No, no, we're talking about, we're talking about when I asked the question about whether we should put the salary range or not.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah. So I would say, just to give direction on that, I heard good pros and cons, but I, and I think you all that are going to be on this committee heard that and understood that and just take that in with you when you meet with Fred.
Yep.
Right? And really resonate with him and I would love for us to be able to pivot and move like with what other agencies are doing too, right? So we don't miss opportunity. Yeah. So I'm fine with it.
In the past, councils tried to save money and they, we didn't get the good end of the stick. You know, we didn't want to put out the money to hire certain people.
Yeah, I think we want to keep our options open and I also want to echo what Councilmember Bracco said, which is, you know, a different way of saying it is when you have over $200 million budget to manage and a huge number of employees and everything like that, yes, $50,000 is a lot to a lot of people, even $100,000 is a lot to a lot of people. But when it comes to difference between getting somebody who is a first stringer and a second stringer, right? When you compare that as a percentage of your overall responsibility and budget, it starts to look really small. And so, you know, asking for grace in the community to look at this and understand that we don't make these numbers, the market makes the numbers and we want to get the best person we possibly can for Gilroy to bring Gilroy forward. And that's going to take a very good look at how we create an overall compensation package to get a really good person.
We're okay with that, that statement? Okay.
I think that's like a thumbs up. It sounds like we, it sounds like we have thumbs up.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
That's it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for that report, appreciate it. Moving on to item number seven, city administrators' report.
No report.
Okay. Item number eight, city attorneys' report.
Also no report, so we have closed session.
Yes.
Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of Government Code, Section 54956.9 and Gilroy City Code, Section 17A11, subdivision three, one case. First thing to do would be to take public comment.
I have no speakers.
Then I advise the council, that is my opinion, that it would prejudice the position of the city to discuss this matter in open session and therefore I advise that we take a vote to go into closed session.
Thank you. We don't need roll call for that, right?
No.
Yeah.
Unanimous? Okay, the vote is unanimous to go into closed session.
Thank you.
We will now adjourn to closed session.